We're called by order of the Grant County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for March 11th, 2013. Welcome everybody and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Salute to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the deassembled perfect friendship among united cultures.
Okay, first item on the agenda today is the approval of the special meeting agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Manager?
None that I know of.
Mr. Commissioner?
Having said that, do you make a motion that we approve the special meeting agenda?
There's a motion and I'll second it to approve the special meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sing five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. For the audience, this is Commissioner Ramos today. He had to be leave on medical, so he's on phone. Matt looking this way.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Very sensitive microphone, apparently. Okay, first item on the agenda is resolutions. Approve or disapprove Resolution Number R 1317, authorizing and approving the submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for the Colonius Infrastructure Fund. John, you want to go over that?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. This is a requirement for us to submit our application. I'm going to defer to Mr. Gutierrez, who's been working on this application, and he's the reason why we're having this special meeting today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The application will actually be for planning grants for the Mexico Infrastructure Fund for drainage improvements and paving of the North Hurley Road. North Hurley is designated as Colonius, and since we've done improvements to the water and wastewater, we felt that this would be a final and last part of the upgrades to that area. The request is in the amount of about $333,000, which would include planning, design, all permits and certificates related to right-of-way, environmental, archaeological, and it would also include final design. Our engineers have also included administration. Of the grant itself, I'm assuming that we will remove that from their estimate and use that as match monies for the application. So it's actually a 10% solid cash match and then 10% of remaining soft match, and we'll also be sending a letter of a waiver for a 10% loan portion of the application. Unless you have any questions, that's all we've got.
Any questions?
No, I just wanted to respond to that loan portion that Anthony spoke of. What the requirement is, is that it's a 90-10, but then of the 90%, 10% of that NMFA requires a loan unless you can show that you have the cash match, and that's what the waiver letter is for. And so that's what we'll do is, the loan is at a 0% interest, but the problem with it is, is they charge an origination fee. So that's what we're trying to get out of by doing the waiver is, if there was no origination fee, then we would gladly use their money at 0% interest, but the origination fee is more than it's worth for us, because I think they charge about a 7%.
That's too much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The waiver will actually be subject to approval of the Board, the Infrastructure Board.
Right. Okay, what's the pleasure of the commission?
At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve R 1317.
In a second.
There's a motion to approve R 1317. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sing five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove Resolution Number R 1318, declaring support for Southwest New Mexico Regional Water Supply Project. John, you want to go over that, please?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners.
On your order, can there be public input for this request?
No. Go ahead, John. There'll be discussion on the motion, but there's not going to be public input, fire to.
Mr. Chairman, I noticed, but public input is not allowed.
In recent weeks, the legislature, there was a capital outlay bill for $25 million put in by Senator Smith to run a pipeline from the Gila to the Las Cruces metropolitan area. In everything we've heard, it was a message bill to get the region to come together and come up with a project that they've been working as part of the Arizona Water Settlement Act group for the last eight years. I know Allison's been involved and his others in the audience have been involved. Anthony Gutierrez has been involved that time. And so his message was, that he's said many times, is that he was trying to get everybody to come together with the group, and if they couldn't come together with a project in the region, then he would come up with a project that would send this water to the Rio Grande because of the battle between New Mexico and Texas right now for the water for Las Cruces, or Las Cruces is used, which would in turn affect all the way up to Santa Fe through the ripple effect going up. So there's been a resolution put together, or I guess a project amendment, put together by Dimming. The city of Dimming submitted a project. They've changed the name of their project to the Southwest New Mexico Regional Water Supply Project. Those amendments, to my knowledge, were due on March 8th to the Interstate Stream Commission. And so they've submitted their amendment. I don't know their whole project. I have not seen that amended project, but my understanding is, from discussions with people in Santa Fe, is that it has to do with a couple of diversions on the river, a pipeline that would run from some point on the Gila River down through Silver City, around through the mining district, greatly following the 180 path all the way around and down to Dimming. I've heard that that pipeline would be a four-inch pipeline. I've also heard that it would be a six-inch pipeline. Haven't seen it, so I can't tell. These are discussions that I've heard up there. From everything we're hearing in Santa Fe, it sounds as though they like that project because it appears on the surface to be a regional project that is taking into account the municipalities and the counties in the planning area, which is Katrin, Grant, Luna, and Hidalgo Counties and the municipalities in those areas. So we've put this resolution together for the commission that talks about the Arizona Settlement Act, what it's doing, that the commission resolves that to support diverting, retaining, conveying, recharging the aquifer within the borders of Grant County with waters available through the Arizona Water Settlement Act. Further resolve that the county commission to support a regional water project submitted by the Grant County Water Commission, Grant County's effluence conveyance, retention, and recharge project, and a permanent irrigation solution for the Gila Valley, and also further be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners support the Southwest Regional Water Supply Project submitted by Dimming if the project is amended to include the technical details of the aforementioned projects. And what we're saying is, currently in Dimming's project, we don't feel it's a county project. We want the infrastructures that are put in there in the Grant County Water Commission project, which is the regional water system. We want the effluent conveyance, retention, and recharge project that was submitted by Grant County to reuse the effluent off the Tri-City Wastewater Treatment Facility to recharge groundwater, and a permanent irrigation solution submitted into that project before it could be supported by the commission, as well as the waters stay within the borders of Grant County. So it would have to be, instead of a pipeline going to Dimming, it would have to be injected into the groundwater in Grant County, be it the Gila Basin or the Members Basin, but it would be injected before any waters left Grant County. The diversions that are in here are part of that project that Dimming has submitted, and that's why they're mentioned in ours, is they have submitted. Any of the projects that Grant County has submitted do not have any diversions in them. The diversion, the reservoir in the project that Grant County has is not a diversion from the Gila River. It's actually putting a natural dam or some form across the Twin Sisters or an area that looks good in that region and taking the effluent from the Tri-City Wastewater Treatment Facility, treating them, pumping them up, and retaining them there so that they could percolate or be released slowly down the Twin Sisters Creek area to help the infiltration galleries of the Santa Clara municipality that hasn't been able to prove up their water rights. And then it would also percolate to support the Bayard, the city of Bayard's aquifer and wellfields. We've done a preliminary study through a group, through the Interstate Stream Commission has paid for that, to prove whether or not that project would work, and that hydrology study has come back to show that, yes, it would recharge those water basins there, those two well-filled areas, by retaining that effluent. So that's our projects, but the reason why we mentioned diverting in here is because that project, excuse me, submitted by Dimming has diversions in it. And that's what it seems as though is being supported up there in Santa Fe. With this resolution, we're just trying to make sure our projects are included into that if that is the project that gets chosen. We're trying to get our infrastructure projects that we have submitted, Grant County and the Grant County Water Commission. That's the gist of why we brought this to you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, this in no way has anything to do, we're not proposing piping any water to Dimming, piping any water to Cruces, to the Rio Grande, or to the state of Texas. In fact, to the contrary. So there's a lot of misinformation. I received some emails with misinformation. This proposal, this resolution, has nothing to do with piping water to Dimming, or to Cruces, or to the Rio Grande, or to the state of Texas. Nothing. We're not approving that. I would be against it, as I said before.
It's not what it says.
It's not what it says.
You're out of order, sir. Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I also would like to add that the water that would be pooled would only be pooled when we have floods in the region. So the only water that would be pooled would be excess floodwaters, not regular water that are running constantly or naturally. The only water that would be pooled are flood excess waters. And that is a fact that a lot of groups have not been putting out there. They have been scaring a lot of people by saying that we are going to pool all the waters from the Gila, which is not a fact. The fact is that we can only pool excess floodwaters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Okay, how does the commission feel?
Are you going to let the public participate?
Sir?
Are you going to let the public participate?
Sir, if you don't want to leave, you're going to be quiet. You understand me? Would you remove that man from the building, please?
You have to let these people participate.
Sir?
I don't want to hear it. You know what? Do not run it.
Oh, that's ridiculous. Explain it. If you will just let, if you will let us finish, sir. Sir, we're going to, sir. If you will clip it and listen, we're going to. If you will listen, I have told you, listen. I have told you, we will have discussion on the motion. That's proper procedure. I will let a certain amount of you talk on the motion. It doesn't have to be on the agenda, sir. I told you, I'm going to say it again, and you will be quiet also. The chair explained that earlier. The chair explained that earlier. That's what we're going to have to have, is people to listen. We're going to have use of our hands now. Listen. Mercy. All right. One more time, how does the commission feel?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we approve R 1318.
And to secure the waters for the regional area, I proudly second.
There is a motion and a second on the motion, R 1318. At this time, we will accept discussion on the motion. I'm going to allow three minutes per person, and we are going to stop discussion in 15 minutes.
Would it be possible to read or to project the text? Because you're right, or Ron is right, that we did understand that this motion was to support John Arthur Smith's $25 million capital outlet.
That is not true. No.
Well, then we need to know what the resolution is.
John?
We need to know what the resolution is.
The "now therefore" statements that I read, that's what the resolution is to, for the commission to resolve, is now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Grant County Commissioners to support diverting, retaining, conveying, and recharging the aquifer within the borders of Grant County with water available through the Arizona Water Settlement Act, the Board of Grant County Commissioners to support the regional water project submitted by the Grant County Water Commission, Grant County's effluence, conveyance, retention, and recharge project, and the permanent irrigation solution for the Gila Valley, and also further resolve that the Board of Grant County Commissioners support the Southwest Regional Supply Project submitted by Dimming if the project is amended to include the technical details of the aforementioned. And so if the project is amended to be, keep the water inside Grant County and not be piped down to Dimming, include the Grant County Water Commission project, include the Grant County effluence, conveyance, retention, and recharge project, and include a permanent irrigation solution to the Gila Valley, then the commission could support that project. But at this point, they don't support it unless it's amended to include those things. That's what the resolution says.
Thank you. Thank you for asking questions. Okay, you're first.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Robert Cross. I live in Indian Hills, and... Is that better? My name is Robert Cross. I live in Indian Hills. Before coming here a few years ago, I was 30 years president of two water companies, one in Hawaii, one in California. I've been a land use planner for 30 years for the state of California. I'm a certified member of the Landscape Architects, and I won't bore with the rest of the crap. The point of it is that I know whereof I speak. I've been fighting this stuff for 35 years, and I didn't think I'd have to surface again here, but here I am. The important thing to consider is that there is nothing to prevent this project from turning itself upside down any more than real estate taxes or property values. There is nothing wrong to present this as a project that Gila County, or Grant County, whichever you wish to call it these days, is going to be less than the third poorest county in the state. What in hell are we doing with a $328 million project, of which less than half will be federally funded? One that will cost us nearly $4 million every year to maintain. This is not a water project of reuse. This is an inter-basin transfer of water. There is one thing on the side of the water that doesn't preempt it from consideration otherwise. We still do not have any talk of a wild and scenic river designation for the Gila River. And yet, when Aldo Leopold put this in place in 1924, it was the first wilderness area, not only in the state, in the country, but in the world. And we are still a wilderness area, and we should stay one. Keep the water not only in the county, keep it in the Gila where it belongs.
My name is Donna Stevens, and I'm the Director of the Upper Gila Watershed Alliance, a watershed protection group with about 200 members based in the Gila Valley. I think there is some confusion here today because it is our understanding that the Southwest New Mexico Regional Water Supply Project, also known as the Dimming Project, is indeed a diversion project, and it diverts water from the Gila River and conveys it through a pipeline to Dimming with perhaps Silver City and the mining district being able to siphon some water off along the way. So I think that some of the problems we are having here in the audience is that we haven't seen the project as it was amended. It was just submitted to the Interstate Stream Commission on the March 8th deadline, which was just Friday. We don't know what the project is. It used to be called the Dimming Project. Now you're saying that you're only going to support the Dimming Project if it is amended. Well, has it been amended or hasn't it? We don't know at this point, and that's why people are feeling upset and emotions are running high. That isn't what I was going to say, though. What I was going to say is that I'm very concerned that a diversion will cause grave harm to the Gila River and its riparian ecosystem, including the plants and the wildlife that depend on the river. You don't have to believe me, though. You can look at a report that was recently submitted to Craig Repke of the Interstate Stream Commission. It's on the website. This report was submitted, was created by the ISC's own consultants, S.S. Papadopoulos and Associates, and it states that a diversion under the Arizona Water Settlement Act is estimated to cause hydrologic changes to small floods and high-flow pulses that are critical to maintaining the Gila River's ecological system. Their report also states, and I quote, "Change to groundwater conditions in areas of groundwater-dependent ecosystems, including wetlands, areas of cottonwood recruitment, or other areas of interest, may occur in response to altered flows," unquote. In other words, a diversion will harm the Gila River's ecosystem, and the harm will occur when water is diverted at even relatively low flows, not during the huge floods. The majority of the water will be diverted during relatively low flows. This report uses Gila River flow data from 1937 through 2001, before our current drought even began. Even during this time of relatively higher flows, the consultants' conclusions are bad news for the river. How much worse will the impacts be during a drought? I won't even mention climate change. Shouldn't we err on the side of caution instead of gambling with our future? Thank you.
I'm Todd Felkin with Center for Biological Diversity. Live here in Silver City. I think there are some facts that not only you need to know, but the taxpayers, which are going to receive this burden for paying for this project, need to know. So currently, and you've said it repeatedly, that the proposal is to eject the water into the aquifer, which means that there is no end-water user who's willing to step up and pay for this. And so what that means is that, in effect, the taxpayers of the county become the water users, and they will have to pay the cost of this. There's nobody else to step up and pay the bill. And the bill's substantial, and I know you guys know this, but I think it's important for the public to understand this as well. This isn't our water. This is not New Mexico's water. It's water owned by the Gila River Indian Community in Arizona, and we get the right to buy water from them on the Central Arizona Project to replace any water we use in New Mexico. And currently, to buy that water to replace 14,000 acre feet would cost $1.8 million a year, every year, that the taxpayers will have to pay. By the time we actually get a diversion bill, it's going to be way over $2 million a year, and we're going to have to pay every year. And it's going to have to come out of the county budget and municipal budgets, and those budgets get funded by taxpayers. Furthermore, the cost of the so-called Dimming Project was proposed to be $323 million, which I know you know. We don't know what the current Southwest Regional Water Supply Project's going to look like, but the bulk of that infrastructure's going to have to be on the Gila Riverside. A big diversion, a huge pipeline, in fact, over 10-foot in diameter, that pipeline's going to have to run from around Turkey Creek down to Mangus Creek or thereabouts, the whole way, 17 and a half miles. It's a huge amount of money it's going to cost, as well as the cost of building a reservoir in Mangus or wherever else that gets put. So the bulk of the money is going to be on the Gila side before it ever gets to Silver City. So this thing's going to cost a lot of money, whether the water gets injected here or whether it goes across the county line into Dimming. It doesn't really matter. It's going to be very expensive, and we're going to get stuck with the bill. And then finally, it's going to cost a lot of money to operate and maintain this. Projections have been anywhere from $3.5 to $5.5 million a year, again, every year, to maintain this thing and operate it, and we're going to get stuck with that bill. So there's one other critical thing that's in addition to the costs. It looks like Mangus Creek has become the preferred place to store this water. Mangus is one of the last places where, off-stream from the main channel of the Gila, where loachmen on spike days, too highly endangered fish exist. It's an incredibly important source population. So when Tink Jackson from the Office of the State Engineer tells you, oh, we'll just mitigate that, I don't think so. This is not going to be an easy toss-away mitigation project that gets done. This is one of the most critical spots for the recovery and further existence of the fish. And so that right there is going to be a huge challenge for this project to go forward, and frankly, it's going to be a litigation magnet. This thing's never going to get built. You guys are going to drag us through this for however long at who knows what cost and what controversy, when we currently have $66 million available to fix everybody's water problems, and we can do that right now. That's common sense and cost-effective. That's what we should do.
Good afternoon. I'm Allison Civic, Director of the Gila Conservation Coalition. The... Sorry. The AWSA decision on whether or not to use Gila River water has tremendous implications for the Gila River, our regional economy, to taxpayers, and the cost of our water. And I'm very concerned that you all are feeling pressured to support the extremely expensive and environmentally damaging Dimming diversion pipeline project before you have complete information upon which to base a sound decision. And you're making this decision to support a Dimming diversion pipeline project outside of the public eye. At your last Grant County Commission meeting on February 21st, we strongly encouraged you to discuss and debate the merits of the decision before you in a public meeting. We said that citizens of Grant County have been involved for years in the AWSA process, and backrooming this decision is contrary to open, transparent government. Citizens deserve your respect for the countless hours and energy they have put into this process. However, I'm extremely disappointed to have learned through Inspection of Public Records Act requests that Grant County Commissioners have had meetings with the ISC and state engineer officials that have not been open to the public to discuss diversion projects under the AWSA, specifically, a meeting on February 2nd and a meeting on February 12th. These actions seriously undermine the public's trust in your abilities to represent all Grant County residents. We want you to consider publicly, common sense, cost-effective, non-diversion alternatives that secure our water future at low cost and keep the Gila River fleet free-flowing. What are the things that we've been talking about through, for all these years under the AWSA stakeholder process? We've been talking about the Grant County Regional Water Supply Project that's going to benefit 26,000 people between Silver City and the mining district. Water reuse projects, Dimming, Bayard, Silver City, and municipal and agricultural conservation. As Todd just mentioned, we can spend the $66 million to meet our future water needs and have money left over without... have money left over without putting us in debt with a big, giant diversion project. We want you to publicly discuss the merits of these non-diversion alternatives. Thank you.
My name is Kyle Johnson. I'm a resident of Gila. We're here to talk about water today, but water is really not the issue. As Allison pointed out, there's been a subversion of process here. There's been a lack of transparency and a serious undermining of the integrity of this body as a result. What we have seen here is going on 10 years of public process that, in the last several months, has suddenly gone wildly awry, where now, something that was passed on, which due to be submitted on last Friday, is being considered here for a resolution in support of something that, as far as I can tell, you haven't even seen. I would also say, in terms of the integrity of this body, the Grant County Commission, that you reconsider your position, your membership, and the County Commission Alliance, and that before people on this commission go to that body and vote on resolutions that have not been discussed here, that that person should be chastised, and they should be prevented from doing any further such act in the future. I would also like to see resolutions from this body stating the limitations on the participation in the County Commission Alliance. One minute? Thank you. I also want to say this, because it was prefaced in your early remarks about the matter of the Rio Grande and Las Cruces and the water there. I don't recall taking any water out of the Rio Grande. That's their problem, not ours. They have been developing Albuquerque, developing Santa Fe for decades, willy-nilly, without any responsible monitoring of the water rights necessary for that development. Now they've gotten their, you know, crack, and all of a sudden, they're looking at us, and we're supposed to be the first ones that are supposed to go toward bailing them out? No. Growth is over in Albuquerque and Santa Fe, if that's what it means, if that's what this court decision means. But it doesn't mean that you're going to take our water on this boondoggle. And when I said that this was not just about water, I want to bring up one other issue, and that's the matter of the copper regulations. That is another matter where an extended--
That's not the motion. It's not public--
It was an extended public process that was subverted by men like yourselves.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Your time's up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. My name is Walter Shemansky, and I'm a resident of the town of Silver City. I spent the better part of a 30-year career as a labor union organizer negotiating contracts with major corporations, and I'd like to respectfully suggest to you folks that what you think this resolution before you contains does not contain what you think it does. And I respectfully ask that you table this motion and put it off to a different day. So I would like to call for a People's Motion to Table Resolution That's Before Us. Do I have a second? All opposed? Guys haven't so ordered.
I am Teja Clark. I am a freshman at Aldo Leopold High School. And I actually just thought out about this. And to tell you the truth, I am really disappointed in all of your guys' judgment. The fact that you would not allow the public to discuss this, even though you are now, because we made a racket about it, the fact that you would not allow us to discuss this before you make the decision is complete and utter, it's just ridiculous. The Gila is part of everybody's life here in Silver City and in Grant County. There's the Gila Festival. Where kids go and learn about our water systems and our ecosystem, and you're going to pretty much take that away. By taking away the access water, the Gila's going to dry out. Have you even been through Cruces? There is no water in that river whatsoever, and it's really sad to see. I'm just disappointed that we have leaders like this in Silver City. And I think that you guys really need to think about what your actions are, because you know what? This is not teaching the younger people of how to act and how to run this area at all.
My name is Brett Myrick. I'm a fifth-generation native New Mexican as well. And Commissioners, I thank you for your position and serving the people. And I would like to say, in listening to three Commissioners speak, one Commissioner speaking of things written from something they received in Santa Fe and not really knowing what it's about, another Commissioner saying that there is no pipeline, no diversion, and another Commissioner coming in remotely saying, "But wait a minute, there is a diversion only if there's floodwaters. So is there a diversion? Isn't there?" The point of what I'm making here is that I don't believe the Southwest County Commission Alliance is educated enough to vote on this resolution, and I see that it should be tabled as well. Thank you very much.
My name's Wendy Phillips. I'm brand-new to Silver City. I don't know the complexity of the issues, but three years ago, when we started investing in Silver City and moving from Colorado, which, where we lived for 30 years, we were told that there was a great number of groups here working on water rights, because it was our first question, and that the groups were respected by the government and participating strongly, and that the people were part of the process. And I don't see that happening, and I agree with what the last man said about what we've heard from you today. And I do think that maybe you need to take a little more time and include more of the great people here in the conversation. But the main reason I stepped to speak was to say that you started this with saying that you're only talking, you're only talking about agreeing to the resolution if you get your way with these other pieces of your process. 30 years of watching water rights in Colorado, that doesn't work, because the minute you say, "Well, we'll agree if," you've already agreed, and that's all they hear. You can't step into a politi-- well, you can. We hope you choose not to step into a political process saying that we'll agree with your stuff if you agree to our stuff, because it never works well in the end that way. Thank you.
I'm a student at WMU, but more importantly--
What's your name?
Jesse Gaudier. More importantly, though, I'm a citizen of Silver City and a citizen of this area. And what I find most alarming about this plan is that it's completely unsustainable on many levels, not just environmentally, but economically. We can't ignore the fact that water is finite and that we're facing drought. And once the water runs out, I mean, we spend all this money, and we have this pipeline, and then the water runs out, and then it's all to waste. And so what I would really like to see is more sensible solutions to become economically sustainable and create sustainable jobs instead of ones that are dependent on a finite resource extraction.
I'm Ella Kirk, and I'm a student at Aldo Leopold High School. First off, I just wanted to thank you a lot for letting us speak. I think it's important just to hear what everybody's saying, because it gives such power to the decision when you understand what everybody's truly saying. And I wanted to say that for all the young people in Silver City, the river is just really something that's very important to this area, because it basically, we are in a desert. I mean, there's no denying, we're in a desert, and the Gila River is the one thing that keeps life alive around here, not just for us, but for everything else. I disagree with the plan to pipe Gila, because there are many endangered species in this area, like the newly reintroduced Gila trout, which, if I understand, the Forest Service has been working very hard to reintroduce the species, and also many other species that would not exist without, in this area, without the river. And I wanted to say that the Colorado River, which flows through the Grand Canyon, it no longer flows through the Gulf of Mexico like it used to. And I just, we can't let that happen to any more other rivers, because it's important that we keep this for everybody, not just for this generation, because water is used up like that. But a river holds so much more life than a cup of water. Thank you.
My name is A.T. Cole. You know, throughout human history, it's been the young people who have really been able to focus on the issue. And I implore you, gentlemen, today, to focus on what these young people have said to you. I was told a couple of years ago that there was a time before Europeans arrived here that you could walk from the head of the Gila all the way to Yuma in the shade, in the shade, the whole way. And there's a little sliver that's left. And I have talked to people in Silver City, and I've asked, "What is the draw to this idea? Why is it that local people will allow outsiders from Santa Fe and Albuquerque to encourage them to drain the Gila and to drain the economic lifeblood out of Silver City and out of Grant County?" Nobody has been able to explain, has been able to answer that. And if any one of you could, I would love to hear it. But I think the most sensible thing that's said today, and I think it's an opportunity for you to defer to the young people and for you to defer to the people that are here that are concerned and to show some respect for the public, for you to vote against the motion that's on the table, and then allow somebody else to make a motion to table this. It's amazing to me, sir, that you have, you don't even know what the people in Silver City or what the people in Santa Fe, what it is they're specifically asking for. You don't know that. And I've sat around now for a couple of weeks, and I've realized that there's been meetings made in which formal actions are taken, and I think in violation of the New Mexico Open Meeting Law. And I know that there are endangered species up there that you folks are going to put these people through five or 10 years of labor. And instead of working hard to keep something bad out of the town, why don't you let these people help you do something that's good for the community? This is a waste of time. This fight, Dutch has been fighting this for 20 or 30 years, and here he sits today, the same thing he heard before. So, please, listen to the young people, and here's an opportunity to show some respect and some deference and do the right thing. I implore you to turn this down and then table. Thank you.
Mr. Bates, before you get started on the mic, who's in the back of the line? Kim, are you the back? Okay, you're the last one.
Commissioners, County Manager, I just wanted to say that I appreciate your particular position. My understanding is that Texas has three lawsuits against New Mexico for the Lower Rio Grande water. My understanding is the impact on Las Cruces is $1 billion per year. My understanding is that the state legislature wants to do something to help Las Cruces. And I think that's part of the reason for Senator John Arthur Smith's bill. I'm hearing, and maybe you are too, and maybe that's why this resolution, if this water doesn't go to the Southwest Region, then it's going to go to Las Cruces. It's not going to go down the river to Arizona. And I think that's the dilemma that you guys are trying to resolve, and that's why I say I appreciate your position. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Leanne Bird, and I'm a freshman at Aldo Leopold High School. And I just heard about this plan, and I just think it's sad that people would even, like, think about it, because it's ruining our river, and it's a very important river. And this is, like, stuff like this is what's ruining our earth. That's it.
Hey, I'm William Hilton from, I'm a freshman at Aldo Leopold High School, and I'd just like to say that, like, how a bunch of other people have said in this court, in this room, I'm disappointed. I don't really think that it's fair that you guys couldn't, I mean, that there should be a pipeline. I mean, people here have grown up with this in their lives for, like, for their entire lives. It's not, it's not cool for people to take that away. It's more than just an ethosism, you know, ecosystem. It's a way of life. I mean, it's just not cool.
Thank you, Commissioners, for taking public comments. After all, Kim McCrory, Regional Director, Staff Scientist with the New Mexico Wilderness Alliance. I actually wasn't going to say anything, but somebody said something that I would like to respond to. We have, we do not know that this water will be piped to the Rio Grande if it is not piped to Deming. So, you know, we can oppose that as well. And there has been a lot of really great discussion here about the Gila River. And I wanted to show you this photograph. This is the Gila River south of Phoenix. The only reason I know it's there is because there was a sign. So, I've worked on the scores very well, and concerns that everybody has expressed to you. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to take comments from staff and the Commissioners. Anthony, did you have your head down?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of comments. One is that I did have a discussion with Rick McInturff about 10 minutes before I came into the meeting, and he's going to email me a copy of the proposal. I would like to let all the people here know is that I have been involved for at least five years in the process, and although I appreciate everyone coming and giving their comments, I can only recognize probably about five of them, because that's how many were here during the stakeholders' group meetings and all of the meetings that were held to try and come to conclusion for these projects. I always mention that nobody's really going to care until either the water doesn't come on in their faucet or something drastically happens to the river. And you can seriously see, exactly how my comments were made, as soon as something, somebody feels threatened, then it's whenever they come and start on the process. Years and years and years of discussion were made. No consensus was ever, we never had any consensus. I think that's why everybody's in a panic right now, although there was, there are some projects right now that we all, I was through the Tier 1 and Tier 2 process also. But that was done by ISC. ISC came and said, "Hey, you know what? We've got to have these projects. We've got to push them through. We've got to do this. We're running out of time." That wasn't part of the consensus process. I would also like to bring to the attention that the Deming Project did pass the Tier 1 and Tier 2 process, and so, therefore, a diversion project, whether it's to the Gila Irrigators or to the city of Deming, is a viable project whether or not this resolution is passed or not. And so, I'm not trying to say I'm for diversion or against one. I live on the Gila River myself. I'm a lifetime resident there, and so I have my own concerns. But at the same time, this has been a long process, and the frustration from the legislators has been voiced year after year after year. And I think that they're, if they're threatening Southwest New Mexico, I think that there's a sufficient reason for that. And so, whether or not, like I said, those are still viable projects that pass the Tier 1 and Tier 2 and are currently being looked at, whether or not our County Commission agrees or disagrees with their content.
Thank you. Anthony, can you explain to the audience the decision process that is made as far as these different projects? Who makes that decision?
Well, currently, I think that, in the process right now, all of the projects are currently going through different feasibility-type studies, whether it's, I think that they-- going through different feasibility-type studies, whether it's, I think that they brought your attention, whether the impact on the environment, I think, is a huge one. And whether, I don't know if those things said anything about harm or not, but I'm assuming they said impact. And there's economic, there's economic feasibility also that the BOR is currently going through. A lot of the projects are still conceptual in nature, especially the diversion projects. They're looking at places that might be a diversion, whether it's up on the Yon Creek or in the, you know, mainstream diversion. Those things are still being looked at. That's what the process is right now. I think it's kind of been put on hold for a minute or two. I think that Senator Smith's legislation has kind of put a big old monkey wrench in everybody and all the wheels, and, but rightly so.
Who makes that decision?
The decision currently right now is through ISC.
And explain who that is.
Interstate Stream Commission.
Okay. And who are they?
They're appointing individuals. Some of them, I think, are legislators. Some of them are residents of different communities. They're all involved in either water or water issues. And I think we even have a representative here, Topper Thor, is a representative from southwest New Mexico, and he's on the Commission. But I think it's pretty safe to say that those are all appointments. And it's also safe to say that the Mexico Legislature, Senator Smith, I'm assuming, probably has a lot of support. There are several representatives and senators from Albuquerque that have been making those same threats for a long time. And so I think that, I think that this is real. And whether or not it's one individual, whether or not there's an alliance of legislators on, along up and down the Rio Grande, I think it's real, and I think that we should address it in the best fashion that we can. A diversion project may or may not be what we want, but it may be, either we can try and do the best for Grant County, or we can have something shoved down our throats. And so I think that, I sympathize with you as elected officials to have to make those decisions, because it's an unpopular one, but it's real.
But we don't make that decision to accept a project or not.
That's right.
This Commission does not.
The Commission does.
Interstate Stream Commission does, and then that goes to the Interior Department.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, Anthony, now, any project that is chosen by Interstate Stream, that would still have to go through a full NEPA process, including the environmental impact, and so I think that the fear of somebody thinking this is happening today should be alleviated.
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. We're 30 years of service, beginning of, probably won't be for at least 10 years. We're looking about 10 years down the road before any type of construction or any of that.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to the Commission's attention as well that in a discussion with Senator Smith and passing in the halls in the roundhouse, he had mentioned that he had just gotten off the phone with the Deming newspaper, I'm assuming, Deming Headlight. He didn't go into detail. And he said that he had just got done telling him that he already had language drafted to drop a bill next year to pipe the Gila River to the Rio Grande, that he's garnered support from Santa Fe to Albuquerque, down to Las Cruces, through that whole valley going through there, that he'll have no issues passing it, that he wanted us to let us know that, that it was a message bill this year, and next year it won't be a message bill.
Commissioner Ramos, do you have anything to add?
Well, I just want to state that it says that we have two choices: to stand by and not do anything and let the proper legislation go through, and let the pipeline continue to run down to Las Cruces. Or we can do something now, before this happens, and keep the water within our Grant County and our four county regions. I think those are the two choices we have. And being that I represent the people of Grant County, I truly believe that we need to do something now before our water gets piped to Las Cruces.
You're being bullied, and you're not saying nothing. This is not our reason. Sir, you're out of order.
Ma'am? If it's impossible to have people in Santa Fe and Albuquerque come down and look at the water that you're voting for, we don't have that authority. Okay. Well, some guys need to have somebody put in there.
We need to get back in order.
How little water is there?
Thanks, ma'am. Okay. At this time, at this time, at this time-
Everybody, one person at a time, and make this officer take the next six hours and be in this room. These folks are not listening. They're being bullied, and they're not saying nothing. They're giving up. So we have to do-
Let's finish this, please. The next, all right, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, I'm in recess. This is meeting second. Please, in recess until further notice. Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting of March 11th, 2013. Contracts and agreement approved or disapproved, Agreement Number A1310, a cooperative project agreement with the New Mexico Department of Transportation for improvements on Cottage Sand Road north of US 180 to intersect, the intersection of Bear Mountain Road in the amount of $50,000. Can we do that?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to attention, this is one of our projects where the, we, the department's share would be $46,320, and the match is $3,680. Total project's $50,000, and this is to put regulatory warning signs, delineators, chevrons, shore-powered flashing beacons in Grant County Route I-40 from .35 miles north of 180 intersections to the Bear Mountain Road. It's just so, it's part of the road departments. After we did the resolution last time, we spoke of the $50,000, and so I almost signed it and then realized we only did 20. So that's why we brought it in front of you.
Okay. It's a pleasure.
Sure, I'd like to move the approval of A1310, the cooperative project agreement with the New Mexico Department of Transportation.
Can I take it? There's a motion in a second to approve Agreement Number A1310. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, we're going to go into executive session in accordance with NMSA 1978-10-15-1, H27. Can I get a motion to go into executive session? Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Commissioner Caston, are you aware that you'll be entering into executive session?
I am.
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that you'll be-
I am.
Okay. I declare us in executive session. We will adjourn from executive session.